Good afternoon, everybody. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood and we're about to start our meeting, our work session. I want to remind everyone that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of April 11th, 2023. For the record, I will call roll call board members and I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett. That I hear present?
Yes, I'm here, Ms. Sullivan.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. And with roll call, all of our board members are present and including our student trustee, Mr. Burnett. So with this, we have a work session regarding our multi-year strategic compensation plan update. This is year three and Dr. Thor and Dr. Gonzalez and I could certainly and Dr. Norene could give a history on this. But I'm going to leave that to you, Dr. Gonzalez. So would you like to introduce our presenters this afternoon?
Yes, good evening or a good late afternoon, President Sullivan, members of the board, members of the CEC and guests that are with us this late afternoon. As you said, there's a history associated with this and I'm not going to go into that because we only got so much time. And I wanted to make sure we spent it all on the update, but through it, I'm sure that Dr. Kelly and her team will provide some reminders on what got us to this place. But more importantly, on where we are today and where we're headed as we continue to implement this multi-year strategic compensation plan. So you're going to hear from Dr. Kelly and Dr. Frank Wilson, Mom Martins, Michelle Keller and Shannon Manji on this. And so with that, President Sullivan, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chancellor. Good afternoon, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests. I want to start with our song for this evening. What a Wonderful World by Louis Armstrong, which represents all of the hard work and collaboration efforts around the strategic compensation plan. So I want to take this opportunity to also thank you to our employees because we are definitely better together.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Great choice.
Thank you. So as the Chancellor mentioned, I also have a few members of the HR team and the co-president of the Employee Senate with us today. I have Dr. Frank Wilson, Mom Martin, Michelle Keller and Shannon Manji with us. Elsa, next slide, please. The basis for our compensation work is the district's compensation philosophy with a focus on five key goals. Building and sustaining an engaged and talented workforce, being good and prudent stewards of public resources and funds, maintaining a total compensation model that values and supports pillars of care, aligns with market trends and recognizes innovative practices while ensuring fair and equitable pay practices and valuing individual and organizational achievements and maintaining a high-performance culture. Next slide, Elsa. This work is solidified through our Board Policy 2.7, which focuses on us implementing competitive, progressive pay structures and also ensuring that alignment with the market median while being internally equitable within our system and also fiscal responsibility. This is achieved through our compensation multi-year plan. Now I will turn it over to Shannon Manji. Next slide, Elsa.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Good evening, everybody. My name is Shannon Manji and I am co-president for staff representation as well as I have a seat on our Compensation Advisory Committee. What I want to speak to you is to honor the commitment that HR has given regarding compensation, the transparency and the shared governance that they have with this process. Staff and faculty have representation you see in our groups with residential faculty through FEC, the adjunct faculty group and the staff representation. Their leaders meet regularly with district HR teams to solve problems such as our compensation issues as well as HR make sure that we have members seated on important committees regarding these topics. One committee we'd like to highlight tonight is the Compensation Advisory Committee. They're charged with collaborating with HR on compensation matters related to the strategic compensation plan as well as other compensation concerns and things we would like to bring forward. The membership of that committee is not just HR. It has employee representation from all groups, staff representation, faculty, adjunct faculty, various councils and district leadership. The structure through this, members vote on plans. There are conversations, there's collaboration, there's shared governance and there's transparency. I have been a part of that committee for several years now and I have never seen so much dedication in the work towards compensation as I have seen in the past few years. The other way that we make sure that voices are brought to the table is through our representative groups. Adjunct Faculty Group and the Residential Faculty through RFACT are responsible for proposed policy changes related to compensation. So we take responsibility for our policies in bringing our concerns and changes forward. We don't ask folks to do it for us. Recently, you probably have heard within the last year, we have developed a staff policy collaboration team, which is the brainchild of Nadine Sellers and Josh Moss. And it has grown to an amazing collaborative transparent group in improving the staff policy manual, which has not been updated in several years. I could continue to go on about the transparency and shared governance and the compensation model that we're bringing forward to you tonight and throughout the years. I just want to say that I am honored to be a part of this work. It has been a difficult road to hoe, but as Georgetta said, what a wonderful world. I am seeing the right people at the table, the right leadership at our district who are moving things in the right direction. President Sullivan, you've said it before, if we had a magic wand and we could fix everything within 24 hours, you know all of us would do it. But to know that we have the leaders who are consistently working for change, for the better for our employees is going to make our district better and it's going to be better to serve our students. So I will now turn it back over to Dr. Kelly as she talks about our compensation plan this year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shannon. And I'm going to move forward with Dr. Wilson so we can move to the next slide.
Thank you, President Sullivan, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the board and guests. It's great to be here with you. We've made a lot of progress by collaborating together with our employees and we're really excited to share with you kind of a little bit of our history and also what we've achieved as we work together. Next slide, please. Back in April of 2021, we met with the board, gave a presentation on our, what our problem was and what we were trying to solve as we addressed market alignment in terms of compensation. On this slide, you can see that in 2021, our spend on compensation for full-time employees was about 326 million, but we were behind the market by about seven percent. And we knew that if we didn't do something, the market would continue to outpace us and our competitiveness in the market would go down and we'd have great difficulty attracting and retaining employees. So we laid out a plan and that plan was to increase employee pay rates at a pace faster than the change in the market so we could ultimately catch up to where the market was. And so what you see here is the red is if we did nothing. The red line shows if we did nothing and where we would be. The blue line is show where we forecasted the market would be going based on the historical data available at the time. Then the green was our projection in terms of how to close the market gap in the five-year period. So this was the plan and we'll give you an update on how we're doing in relationship to this overall plan. Next slide, please. Next slide. So we looked at, the overall objective was to increase our spend in compensation by around four percent each year. And so last year it was 4.13%. For this year, what we're proposing is an additional 4.13%. And then in terms of the model, we're forecasting 4.12 and 4.12% for the next two years after that. So this was the overall strategy we developed back in 2021 in terms of how are we going to get to where the market is? And then once we're there, keeping pace with it. We also referenced during this board presentation back in 2021 that we would also need to pay attention to equity and other items within the structure and make sure we're addressing those as we move forward. Next slide, please. So I'd like to go through a few slides to give a little bit of history about the board's involvement in this work because the board's support has been critical to the success. So the Governing Board first approved the compensation philosophy back in October of 2020. In April of 21, we presented the strategic compensation plan. We laid out our goals, how we were going to achieve market line compensation and we identified targeted adjustments for the next several years up through fiscal year 26. A couple of weeks later, the board approved a 4% pay increase for employees retroactive to January 21. That was the beginning of the improvements in compensation and we're deeply grateful for that. And in May of that year, the board approved the fiscal year 22 budget with 23.97 million dollar investment in employee compensation. Next slide, please. So also that same month, in May of 21, the board approved an update to Board Policy 2.7 Employee Compensation and Benefits. And that update directed the Chancellor to implement the strategic compensation plan and made a commitment to pay that at the market median that's internally equitable and fiscally responsible. This board policy has been extremely helpful for us and has helped guide the work we've been doing over the last couple of years as we focus on addressing these three areas of getting to the market, also being internally equitable and being responsible for the funds that have been allocated to us. In April of 22, so we came back to the board, provided an update. We talked about our refined faculty and staff pay equity strategy. We talked about specific enhancements that have been made in our administrative support, IT and academic advising areas. We proposed a 4.13% pay increase and we talked about equity adjustments we plan to make to address that internal equity issue that had been identified in the Board Policy 2.7. Next slide, please. Then we came forward at the end of that month and brought forward a recommendation for pay increases, which included a 4.13 pay increase for eligible employees, a livable wage recommendation to bring that up to 1665 an hour. Previously, it had been down at just over $14 an hour. We proposed a 23.8 million dollar investment for cost of living, market and equity adjustment. And we also laid out the strategy of offering lesser increases to one or more employees to establish internal pay equity. In June of 22, the board approved an update to Board Policy 2.7 that called out the roles of the Compensation Advisory Committee and Employee Benefits Advisory Committee in this work. As Shannon highlighted earlier, shared governance is critical for this work and we deeply value the recommendations coming out of the Compensation Advisory Committee and the Employee Benefits Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. So let's look at some of the adjustments and improvements made over the last year. So as planned, the residential faculty, staff and part-time employee rates increased by 4.13% effective July 1 of 22. We also had faculty and staff pay equity adjustments were implemented on that same date. And organizationally, we made a 25.98 million dollar investment into employee compensation enhancements. And that includes carryforward funds from the prior year. Next slide, please. We also rolled out a new faculty salary system. This came as a recommendation out of our Compensation Advisory Committee. That new system has an objective methodology for valuing graduate credits. It presented a professional growth salary advancement opportunity for faculty with doctorate and it laid out a multi-year plan for structural modification of the salary placement structure to reduce the risk of salary inversion. Salary inversion is where new hires come in and are paid more than comparably qualified current employees. Actions we took supporting internal pay equity, we did a comprehensive review of transcripts, which resulted in 381 residential faculty receiving about 1.75 million dollars in equity adjustment. And this was an adjustment to their salary grades. We also had 55 faculty who were most severely affected by salary inversion receive the step adjustment of one to three steps. Next slide, please. We also rolled out new staff salary placement procedures this past fall. This reduces the subjectivity of the pay placement process, thus reducing the risk of internal pay inequities. The new staff pay placement procedures also align pay placement, our pay placement process with our pay equity strategy and it also supports our strategy to align pay with the 50th percentile of the market. With this new staff pay placement strategy, if an employee has or a potential employee has nine or more years of directly related experience, their pay placed at midpoint, which we're working to align with the market median. Next slide, please. We also implemented the livable wage enhancement, again boosting the livable wage from 1442 to 1665 per hour. That was effective on August 20th. That was in direct response to a request from the board that we move in that direction. We retired our lowest paying salary grades of grade 100 to 103 and we moved 10 jobs that were in those lower salary grades to higher pay grades, including roles such as custodian, groundskeeper and student services technician. The methodology we used to move these 236 employees who were in these grades prevented salary compression and inversion. That means as we move these folks to new pay rates, we ensured that their relative pay position to each other was the same. So we didn't create a leapfrog sort of effect with folks that were originally paid lower jumping over the pay rates of those that were above them. Next slide, please. All right. So I'd like to go over a review of our general equity strategy. Next slide. So we designed this equity strategy and then what I'm going to lay out right here is for our staff and it's a minimum target rate we're looking at in terms of pay equity. So based on the amount of time they've been in their job that they're in, their job code, we assure them that we will move them to an appropriate pay rate, an equitable pay rate if they're not already there. So for example, if an employee is in their job for one year and they're not yet making 83% of midpoint, we will move their pay rate to 83% of midpoint after completing one year of work. Likewise, if they've got two years in the job code and they're not yet at 88% of the pay grade midpoint, we will adjust their pay rate such that they are at 88% of midpoint and so on, as you can see on the list. So this is the strategy we began last year. We implemented that to begin to move folks into the equitable range and into our pay progression pathway, which I'll highlight in a future slide. Next slide, please. So this identifies the overall strategy and I referenced just a moment ago, the pay progression pathway. We're seeking to get employee pay rates into that area between the upper green line and the lower red line. And we're referring to that area as the pay progression pathway. Well, as you can see in this example from last year, in terms of the lab technician role, our pay rates are all over the board in terms of our employees. And so we're really trying to address the internal equity. So you see on the lower part, those dots that are falling below the dashed green lines. The dashed green lines represent those equity targets that we represented on the prior slide. So our commitment was to adjust all those black dots that are below the dashed green lines, bring them up to the dashed green lines. Likewise, as we look at the folks that are making significantly more than their peers who have been in the jobs for the same amount of time, those are the purple dots above the green line. The plan is to have those folks receive slower pay growth than their peers such that we can begin to close the gap between those that are higher paid than comparably qualified and experienced employees in their same job classification. We felt this strategy of slowing their growth was more favorable than trying to cut pay of any employee in an effort to establish that equity. Next slide, please. So last year, we wrote this into the board item in May of 22 about, you know, as we try to achieve that internal pay equity that we've been charged to achieve, that there may be instances where offering a lesser pay increase or no increase at all might be needed to reestablish pay equity in the job classification. And we are implementing this strategy this year. And so you'll see here in a moment how we're seeking to achieve that and yet how we're also seeking to make sure we're providing employees something to help them as they deal with our economy. Next slide. Next slide. So here are the planned increases, the ones that we'll be bringing forward. We have 3,198 full-time staff right now. We do expect that to seasonally decrease by July 1, but then it'll come back up. We forecast as we move into the next year. If we were to spend 4.13% of our current staff budget, if you will, plus the 22.33% which represents the benefits cost associated, that it would cost us about 11.22 million to provide that sort of an increase. So what we're going to do is rather than across the board 4.13% increase, we are proposing targeted increases to address the internal pay equity concerns while at the same time moving the entire structure towards the market. So we're looking at multiple types of increases. The overall forecasted spend is a little bit more than that 4.13% of the budget. We're looking at about 12.35 to 12.60 million is the proposal for the investment on our staff side with 6.96 to 7.1 million going to what we call a mass salary increase. This is related to an increase in the salary schedule itself and also the increases of the pay rates of employees. And then for eligible employees, we're proposing an additional about $5 million investment for what we're referring to as pay progression increases. And we'll highlight that in the coming slide. And then finally, about $380,000 to $390,000 in equity adjustment. The net effect of this is that the average increase will be about 4.64%. And again, this is working within the resources that have been budgeted for this work. Next slide, please. So here's how we are proposing that it be play out. The first step is to adjust the salary schedule by 2.63%. This moves the entire salary schedule up and we actually have 24 employees who were above the pay range maximum and grandfathered in it, that was higher rates, who are brought back into the range by this movement. This particular strategy supports market alignment, fiscal responsibility and internal pay. Once we've adjusted the salary schedule, we're proposing to provide a mass salary increase of 2.63% up to the salary range max. Now for our employees who are above the top of the range, there is no proposed increase there. But for the employees that are near the top of the range, but they're going to bump into the top of the range before they get the full 2.63%, they'll get a lesser amount than 2.63%, but they'll end up being at the maximum pay rate. But everyone else will get the 2.63% pay increase. This strategy supports market alignment and fiscal responsibility. Once we've applied that 2.63% increase, the next step is to provide an additional 2.22% increase and that increase is being referred to as a pay progression adjustment. And so employees above the pay progression pathway maximum will not receive the pay progression increase, but the other employees will. And so some employees near the pay progression pathway maximum will receive an increase that's a little bit less than 2.22%. But other folks will receive the full 2.22%. This strategy increases internal pay equity and reduces the risk of salary inversion and supports market alignment. So after we've done those three steps, we then evaluate everyone's pay and said, are there any remaining equity adjustments we need to make to bring them up to those pay equity targets? And that's the final step in the process. The good news is those earlier steps make progress and deal with a lot of the equity concerns. So we're building an overall strategy to prevent equity issues even as we have a strategy to address equity issues that may occur. Next slide, please. So we'll walk this through visually. I know I've thrown out a lot of technical terms and so what we have three slides here that kind of illustrate where our employees are and how this work is achieving the objectives laid out by the board. So after we've adjusted the salary schedule by 2.63% and after we've provided employees that 2.63% pay increase, this is where our employees lie. And again, this is on the staff side. We have 14 employees that are above the salary range maximum. We have about 21 employees over on the right-hand side at the salary max. We've got about 279 employees above the pay progression pathway, about 1,954 employees in the pay progression pathway. We've got in the orange regions there about 625 employees. They're below the pay progression pathway but above the equity targets. And then we've got 305 employees that are below our equity targets. And those equity targets are represented by those dashed green lines. And so that's the level we told employees they can anticipate. Based on their time and their position within Maricopa, they could expect to achieve a certain level of pay and those are what those equity targets are. As we get ready to move to the next slide, I want to draw your attention to the number of people below the equity targets. Right now it's 305 and show the impact of our pay progression increase on that number. Next slide, please. Notice that once we provided that pay progression increase, the number below the equity targets drops to 170. That is by providing the pay progression increase, we move more folks into that pay progression pathway and we address the issue of those that are below those equity targets. The final step then for these 170 is to provide an equity adjustment such that everyone is making at or above those equity targets. Next slide, please. And you can see there that after that adjustment, everyone is above the equity targets and they're either in the pay progression pathway or maybe above the pay progression pathway or overall above, but no one is making less than the equity targets. And we've successfully got 76% of our staff employees in the pay progression pathway. As we continue to do this year to year and implement this strategy over time, what we'll see is that the number of folks above the pay progression pathway will go down. The number of folks below the equity targets will go down and more and more people will be in that pay progression pathway. These data, by the way, just for those who saw earlier versions of this, this is updated as of 4/3/23 and also includes the 2 point, whatever the increase we agreed on, 2.63% increase, which is larger than the original increase we were going to propose. Next slide, please. So let's look at how it affects individual employees. We're going to look at two officers, Officer A and Officer B. Officer A is a police officer, five years in the job code, as is Officer B. But Officer A is paid above the pay progression pathway. Officer B is paid within the pathway, but there's a gap between the two officers of about $3.87 per hour. Officer A gets the mass salary increase, as does Officer B. But because Officer A is above the pay progression pathway, there will be no further increases for Officer A. Officer B, on the other hand, is within the pay progression pathway, receives that additional 2.22% increase, boosting his or her rate to $39.22 and closes that gap a little bit to $3.12. So it's progress, chipping away at it. Officer B receives a 4.989% increase overall. Officer A gets a 2.62% increase. There's a slight variation there simply due to rounding. The overall increase in the salary schedule is the 2.63%. That's what we're proposing. Next slide, please. The next example is two administrative specialist seniors, A and B, both have five years in the job. Specialist A is being paid above the pay progression pathway. Specialist B is below the equity minimum. The gap between the two is $8.01 per hour. So they both qualify for the mass salary increase. They both qualify, rather the one above the pay progression pathway does not get the pay progression increase, but the one below does or below it does get the pay progression increase and also an additional equity increase. So at the end of the day, we've closed the gap from $8.01 to $6.77 per hour. Specialist B gets a 9.56% increase. Specialist A gets the 2.62% increase. Next slide, please. So what's our livable wage strategy for fiscal year 24? We recognize there's a strong interest from the board that we continue to watch this livable wage. When we went out and looked at the data that MIT pulled together for livable wage for Maricopa County, the rate they're quoting as of March 23 is $18.48 per hour. And so what we wanted to do before we simply just made an adjustment to the rate, we wanted to see how is the work we are already doing affecting those employees? Are we getting there with the other strategies we're implementing? So the proposed increase in terms of the salary schedule will move the lowest base pay for a full-time employee up from 1665 per hour to the 1709 per hour. So that's the beginning in terms of getting closer to that $18.48 rate. We have five incumbents that were making 1665 an hour right now. Their pay is expected to go up to 1740 per hour after all the increases that we're putting together. We looked at the 117 incumbents earning less than 18.48 per hour. Their average rate right now was 1775 per hour, but after all of the adjustments between mass salary, pay progression, equity adjustments, their average hourly rate will go up to 1875 an hour, which is above the 1848. So as we looked at the overall adjustments that are happening, our recommendation for this year as related to our livable wage strategy is to go ahead and increase the rate from 1665 to 1709 while recognizing that the other pay increases we are putting in place are moving the pay rates of many of these employees to above the 1848 per hour target. Next slide, please. We also care about our part-time staff and as, as we proposed last year that they receive a 4.13% increase, we are also proposing again this year, they receive a 4.13% increase. And these two recommendations are more favorable than what was proposed two years ago when we implemented 25 cent per hour increase. So this is more favorable for our part-time employees and I think addresses how they are valued in our organization. We also, on the adjunct faculty side, we're proposing a rate increase there for the level one rate. That goes from $1,012 per load hour to $1,054 per load hour. Also within the adjunct faculty, we're proposing tiers. Actually, the tiers have already been approved. They'll go into effect for fall of 2023. And that will allow adjuncts to boost their pay by 5 to 10% over the level one rate. We're also doing a comprehensive review of our part-time jobs to better align those with the market. We have a cross-functional team working on our temporary guidelines, which provides pay rates and, and job descriptions. And we're also looking at making sure those pay ranges are aligned to part-time jobs within the market. Next slide, please. All right, now we'll look at our full-time faculty. We have 1,465 full-time faculty. We do expect that number to seasonally decrease by about 6% by July 1, but then we'll expect to return to those levels for the fall semester. If we were to invest 4.13%, if we were to increase the spend on faculty pay by 4.13% when we add in the benefits amount, we'd be at about $7.1 million and that is our forecasted spend in investing in our, in our residential faculty. This includes about a 6.68 to 7.10 million dollar investment, includes a pay progression increase, which we will refer to as a step, and also some equity adjustments. The overall average increase for a faculty member is estimated at 4.47%. Again, these estimates are all estimates because we know there's going to be retirements in the spring and so forth. So we'll, we'll be able to report back in terms of what the actuals were, but this is what our forecast is. Next slide, please. So here's how we are proposing that the faculty pay be adjusted. They are on a different pay scale than our classified staff. And in a shared governance way, we, we met with our faculty leaders with FEC and they brought forward a recommendation to the Compensation Advisory Committee, which the Compensation Advisory Committee reviewed and ultimately approved. So this is the proposed strategy. Increase the number of steps on the salary schedule from 14 to 50. This step was important because it put folks in a position that all faculty could receive a pay progression increase. The next proposed change, which had already been written into the faculty agreement, was to increase the credit rate from $163.31 to $164.57. Then there was a proposal to increase the salary schedule base just slightly by $20 to $49,725. And finally, due to the increased step going to step 50 in the top of the scale, goes from 109, $457 to 113,500, I'm sorry, not 1,113, $113,550, make sure I said that right. So this strategy supports market alignment, fiscal responsibility, and internal pay equity. The recommendation is then, once we've adjusted the salary schedule, that we provide a pay progression increase of one step. That's a flat rate of about $3,466 for each faculty member, regardless of where they fall on the pay scale. This addresses internal pay equity and reduces the risk of salary inversion and supports market alignment. And then finally, after we made those adjustments, provide any equity adjustments for our faculty to make equity adjustments in terms of their step. And so just as we did on the staff side, we're treating these two groups comparably. Next slide, please. So we've identified pay equity step targets for our residential faculty. So if someone's been in their residential faculty job for one year and they're below step two, we propose that they be moved to step two. If they've been in their job two to three years and they're below step three, we recommend that they be brought up to step three and so on. You can see on the equity targets there. Next slide, please. Here's a visual very similar to what we saw on the staff side. We've got a pay progression pathway. And we have individuals who are below the equity targets. Here we have 322 faculty that are below those equity targets before we do any sort of pay mass salary increase or pay progression increase. Next slide, please. After we apply the pay progression step, we move a lot of folks into the pay progression pathway. So after applying that initial step, we have 93% of the faculty in the pay progression pathway, just 105 faculty who are below that pay progression pathway. So then we make an additional equity adjustment for those folks to bring them into the pathway comparable to what we did on the staff side. Next slide, please. And with that equity adjustment, all of the staff, all of the faculty have been moved into the pay progression pathway. And so, and that they'll remain in the pay progression pathway as we continue to implement our plan to provide pay progression increases on a regular basis. Next slide, please. So let's look how this affects individual employees. We're going to start with two employees. Both have six years as residential English faculty. Both are below the equity step. So one's at step three, one's at step four. After we do the pay progression increase, Faculty A is at step four and Faculty B is at step five. Step five is the equity target, so Faculty A will receive one additional step and be brought up to step five. So now both Faculty A and Faculty B are paid at step five and they're both residential English faculty with six years as residential faculty. Next slide, please. So how has all of these efforts affected our overall plan? Next slide. Here's an updated version of that visual I shared at the beginning. We've shifted to look at the median annual full-time salary to allow us to make year-to-year comparisons more easily. But let's look, let's go ahead and look at this. We have, this is for our full 4,661 full-time faculty and staff. Back in 2021, the, the median annual full-time salary was around $66,000. Green was how we projected that we were going to close the market gap. Blue is where we projected the market would be. So things have not played out the way we projected. COVID really disrupted the market and what we're seeing in the market, instead of moving at that 2.6%, 2.7% that we forecasted, the market's been moving at about 5.1% annually in terms of wages. So you can see the orange graph there shows where the market has moved. The black graph shows what we've been able to achieve with our multi-tiered strategy of the mass salary increases, the equity adjustments and so forth, revised pay placement strategy. So what we see is we've actually achieved more than we thought we'd be able to achieve in terms of, of moving up that, that median rate to try to close that market gap. But the, the market is still moving rapidly. So we're, we're going to watch the market as we move forward and see if we can still close that gap by 2026. We don't know what the market's going to do at this point, if it's going to level off in performance as it has done historically or if we're going to continue to see these high rates of inflation affecting our employees. But we are encouraged that we are making progress, although not as rapidly as we like due to the, the market moving more quickly than we anticipated. Next slide, please. So fiscal stewardship, that was one of the three key elements for us. Next slide. So overall, what this is, is the, the amount of resources that have been proposed to invest in our employees. You can see from fiscal year to fiscal year, what those proposals have been and what they are for the future. And we are seeking to be wise fiscal stewards with the resources allocated to us by the organization and approved by the board to achieve the goals laid out in Board Policy 2.7 related to employee compensation and benefits. Next slide, please. So when, as we move forward down this road, there was some concern expressed that some of the employees will not be receiving a 4.13% increase or higher. And back in the original presentation from 2021, when we proposed the increases, we did lay out that the overall spend, the overall budget would increase by about 4.13% per year. But that was widely interpreted by employees as a commitment that their individual pay increases would be in that amount. So as we strategized and collaborated with stakeholders to figure out how do we address this concern, we landed on stipends for, for those employees whose increases are less than a 4.13% increase. Many employees, their increases will be greater than 4.13% with the combined strategy, but there are some that will be less. So the, what the proposal is to provide a stipend to make up the gap for these full-time employees. These tend to be the highest paid employees in the various job classifications, the highest end of their structure, they're near, near the top of their pay ranges. But they are still dealing with the same inflationary challenges that all of us are dealing with. The estimated one-time cost for this is about 1.16 million. So I'd like to walk through an example. This is an administrative specialist senior who's currently making $60,199 in that role. The individual received the, the pay increase, bringing her up to $61,776. That's about a 2.62% increase when we, with the rounding. But she will also receive a stipend of $909. And when we add the stipend to the annual rate and, and calculate the, the percentage increase, it is a 4.13% increase. So in this way, the employee is able to get a 4.13% increase for the 23, 24 year. But of that, just the 2.62% or 2.63% is the base salary increase. Next slide, please. So as we continue to seek to be wise stewards, we meet regularly with our business services colleagues monthly. We go over our spending, we talk about the goals. We talk about how to leverage the resources that we have to achieve these objectives. And so what you see here is a spreadsheet kind of walking through where the dollars are going, how we're moving forward on the strategic compensation plan with the dollars that have been allocated to us and also identifying our planned spend. One of the items you'll see there is IT reclassifications. We've been working diligently on this for quite some time now with our IT partners. We're very close to finishing this up in terms of market aligning our IT jobs. And we're, we've set aside $770,000 to provide for pay adjustments as a result of those reclassifications and that market alignment within the IT space. Next slide, please. We've got some rough estimates for what we expect for fiscal year 24. We're expecting a little bit of query for, for dollars and then we're, we'll be bringing a proposal to the board related to all of the items I've just laid out in terms of the equity increases, the pay progression increases and so forth. I did note here on this slide, we had a 2.22% base increase listed here. That has been increased to 2.63%, so I want to note that error on the slide, which we will, we'll get corrected. Overall, you can see the overall strategy, we're looking to have about a million dollars. That's unobligated as we move forward and we want to build it a little bit of a buffer. So if something costs more than we're forecasting, we're able to cover it without having to ask for additional resources. Next slide, please. And that is the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, so here we are. That was quite a presentation. I wanted to thank you and your team, Dr. Kelly and Ms. Wilson for, for this information. Board members, I expect you may have some questions. I do want to thank you, Ms. Wilson, for framing out where this started back a few years ago with the presentation of ideas for a compensation plan that then did materialize in an actual compensation philosophy that we as a board voted on and which over the years you've been applying. We're now entering year three. Board members, I think sometimes when we have something this intense, probably wrong word, but with so many facts and complex layers, I'd like to just go through one by one for you to offer any comments or questions. Dr. Thor, you're kind of our historian, so I'm going to start with you.
Well, I'm the historian on many things, I'm afraid.
Yeah, so we love it.
Thank you. That's generous. First, I want to begin by thanking and complimenting the HR team and the Compensation Advisory Committee on the tremendous progress that we have made over the last few years. I remember when I first came on the board in January 19, there was not only no pay action going on, but there was little to no investment on an annual basis in employee compensation. And so we've really come a long, long way in addressing our competitiveness as well as ensuring equity among our employees. Just two, probably two questions, maybe three questions. Dr. Wilson, when you talked about livable wage, you said that we would still have some employees below livable wage. How many is some?
So President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, thank you for that question. So I, let me scroll back to that slide. I believe we had 117 employees that were making less, let me confirm that number for us, less than the 1848 on average. And after the increases, the number of those were going to move up. I believe it's going to be a handful of employees. I can get the exact number for you. Probably I would venture a guess between, maybe around 30-ish people might be below that 1848. One reason we, we, go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was going to say, last year, last year when we adjusted the livable wage, we completely redid the bottom of the salary schedule, those bottom three tiers. And we actually changed those grades and changed those intervals. And so as we assess, does it make sense to go to that level of review in, in modification of our structure? This year, we felt that keeping with the same structure for this year and having many of these folks getting to that 1848, that that was, that was a preferred strategy, but certainly we can look at, if there's a desire to ensure every employee gets to 1848, we can look at that. But we'll want to re, kind of look at the strategy on doing that so we don't create pay compression for our employees in doing that work.
Yeah, so, so thank you, Dr. Wilson. You anticipated what, what I was going to ask next and whether there's anything further that we could do to ensure that all of our employees are at a livable wage.
So we can take that under advisement and take that back to look into that, Dr. Thor.
Okay, thank you. And then how many employees will be receiving the stipend?
Great question, Dr. Thor. So our, our initial estimates on the faculty side, it's around, it's over 800 and on the staff side, it's, it's over 500. And the exact calculations will be run once we, once we have the final numbers that flow it out of the system. It's a lot of folks.
Okay, yeah, much, much higher than I anticipated. And then my last question is just a process question. And I think you were addressing, and I just wasn't clear. Will the, this, this compensation proposal be brought to us as a separate board item or is it simply included in the budget?
Thank you, Dr. Thor, for that question. So consistent with our past practice, we will be bringing forward a separate board item related to these proposed pay adjustments, and we're planning on bringing that to the board for the May board meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
May I follow up on that? If you're bringing it to the May board meeting at the same time you're bringing the budget, is that a challenge for us?
I will defer to Dr. Kelly to respond to that question.
President Sullivan, traditionally, we, we bring the salary, the mass salary increase board item in May during the second read of the budget. But if, if there's interest in us presenting it sooner, we can try to get it on for the April meeting.
Ms. Grineau, do you, I believe you're present as a panelist, do you have a comment to that?
Certainly, thank you, President Sullivan. So what, what the plan is, is that at the May meeting, the first action will be hopefully to adopt the budget, and then the compensation adjustments would come in the regular business meeting. The concern about doing the opposite and having the compensation adjustments come first is then I really think it backs you into having to approve the budget. So we would like for the budget to get approved first, and then the compensation adjustments can be approved, hopefully right after that, is the plan.
Thank you, I appreciate you answering the question. I hope that was also helpful to know for our, our new board members who haven't done this before, so thank you for that. So, Dr. Thor, if you're finished with your questions, I'm going to move to Ms. Smith.
I am finished.
Hello?
No questions from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, Dr. Norini?
No, no questions, just hats off to all the work that went into this and, you know, the real need that we've had to do this to get the equity and get the salaries up to where they, they need to be. So you can see by the slides, there was a lot, lots of work, lots of discussion must have happened behind, behind the doors, so just great job for everybody to get us to this point.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Ms. Davis?
I echo Dr. Norini's comments. I'm proud to be part of an organization that spends this much time to figure this stuff out, to get everybody to an equitable place. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And Ms. Butler?
Thank you very much. You know, I want to just say how much I appreciate this, all of the thought and the, on the work that has gone into this and the priority to make sure that these, this pay structure is going forward. And also just to say thank you again to Dr. Kelly and Dr. Wilson. Met with, with Ms. Davis and I for a good hour and went through this with us, so I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Ms. Bittersmith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I do have a couple of quick questions. Back to the question that Dr. Thor started on the stipends, I just want to better understand how those will be generated. Is, a stipend is going to be procured for every single employee that, that falls under the 4.2% mark, or is there a merit conversation that happens with the granting of a stipend?
Thank you so much for, for that question, President Sullivan and Governing Board Member, Mrs. Bittersmith. Actually, it will, it will be a one-time stipend paid to those individuals, those 800 plus. I think, Frank, you mentioned 800 faculty and then 500 staff members.
That's correct, Dr. Kelly. So over, over 800 faculty, over 800, over 500 staff. And to the question, Ms. Bitter Smith, at this point, we don't have a performance-based mechanism by which, you know, pay is tied to performance, although we do expect folks to continue to be engaged in moving the work forward. But these dollars are not tied to any performance criteria in terms of an eligibility to receive these things.
Okay, I just wanted to collect, to better understand how that, how those were going to be determined. And then my other question, and you may have said this and I missed it, and I apologize in advance if that's the case, but can you tell me the source of the market alignment data and how current that is?
Thank you for that question. So, Ms. Bitter Smith, we, we use an index called the Employment Cost Index, and that's published by the, the Department of Labor. And so we track that, and it shows how wages in our area and also the cost of benefits are changing. So that's one of the indices that we look at. We also have separate databases we subscribe to that have targeted positions related to particular jobs that we have when we look at market analyses for individual jobs, such as what we're doing on the IT side. So overall trends in the market, we look at the Employment Cost Index, that's called the ECI, and we monitor that regularly.
Okay, so primarily Federal Department of Labor and then ECI, are any other indices you're using besides ECI, are they position-specific?
Sure. So, yes, we do look at position-specific through a database we subscribe to, but we also pay attention to the CPI, of course, that's how employees are being affected, and we know that the CPI is outpacing the, the ECI. We do pay attention to all those indices, and then within, you know, we recognize what happens, we also know what we have in terms of resources, so we try to leverage the resources we have to do the maximum gain we can. But we do recognize that the market's moving at a pace more rapidly than what we had forecasted, and so we're seeking to do what the best we can with the resources we have.
And also, Mrs., and also, Mrs. Bitter Smith, when we created the multi-year compensation plan, we did have Mercer do a complete market analysis for us. And for FY '25, we will be moving forward with an update as well as outlined in the multi-year compensation plan.
Okay, thank you. That's, both answers are very helpful, I appreciate it. Those are my questions, President Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Mr. Burnett, do you have any questions?
Not, not a question, just, well, maybe more general, but it sounds like this is something that, obviously, I wasn't on the board when this started multiple years back, but in response to the fact that, and if you can clarify this for me, we were not keeping up with the pace of competitive institutions and their pay schedules, and this is the reason we instituted this, this, this process, and that you are using multiple indices to make sure that our staff and faculty are paid commensurate with what other staff and faculty are being paid as far as federal indexes and other indexes that you're using to, to justify that. Is that my understanding?
President Sullivan and Mr. Burnett, that is correct.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for all your hard work, and I definitely, it was definitely eye-opening, and it sounds like a very energetic project with a lot of thought behind it, so I appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions more, comments. Again, going back, when I started on the governing board and with others, we discovered that, and with certainly Dr. Thor's reflection here, we recognized that there were a lot of concerns over pay equity, number one. Number two, keeping up with cost of living increases, and we charged the Human Resources Department and others to go forth and kind of help figure this out. We then digested and put forward our interests through the philosophy, and I am grateful that it stands today because of the work and effort that everyone puts in to reaching some agenda and peak where we will be completely commiserate with our environment when it comes to pay. You have worked diligently to ensure that the compensation plan philosophy is that top of mind, and I want to say thank you for that and proud that we're three years in with two more years to go of this. And then the next opportunity will be to see what revisions, if any, people would like to make to that. So thank you very much for your hard work, for the amount of time that you've taken to explain this to us. Many of us do not work in this area, so having a succinct and thoughtful presentation that we can all understand is greatly appreciated. So thank you for that. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments on this before I adjourn our work session?
President Sullivan, just a few brief remarks. First, I want to thank Dr. Kelly and her team for taking an immense amount of data, and, and these are moving targets, and so I appreciate the specificity that they're able to provide early on to, to give you as a board the best information, most timely information to make an informed decision. And then on behalf of all the employees at Maricopa, President Sullivan and members of the board, we recognize that there are many ways to demonstrate value of our employees, and having a compensation plan that, that helps the employees know that year after year that there will be something that helps address the, especially this rampant inflationary rate that we've been experiencing, it, it, it really helps. And so I just, I want to say thank you on behalf of all of the Maricopa employees for your, your dedication and demonstrating this form of value to employees in your multi-pronged approach to demonstrating value. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. So everyone, I'm going to conclude our work session for this evening at 5:32, and I want to again thank all the presenters and thank everyone who was listening and participating in today's agenda review. The next item on our agenda is to move into the agenda review. And am I feeling a need, board members, for staff for a five-minute break? Just speak up if you feel we do, otherwise I'm ready to move headlong into the agenda Okay, I'm not hearing any dissenters, so with that, I have adjourned the work session, and now I'm going to move into agenda review. And once again, for purposes of the record, I'm going to announce that we are live captioning this meeting as well. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link, and please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, 5:33 PM, I call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of April 11, 2023. Today, we will review the agenda for the April 25, 2023 board meeting. Once again, for the record, I'm going to call roll for this particular meeting, and I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett. Are you present? Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norini? Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. And with my presence again, all seven board members are present for this agenda review session and also our trustee, student trustee, Mr. Burnett. As usual, we will start our board meeting at 6:30 PM, and there will be the usual events of call to order, pledge of allegiance, and the student life report, faculty executive council report, adjunct faculty report. We'll have a staff representation update, and then we'll move to acknowledge our emeritus awards and recognitions, and Dr. Gonzalez's chance for the report. There are multiple items on the consent agenda, and as usual, I'll read them out and ask if you have any comments or questions. There are multiple faculty emeritus distinctions to acknowledge. We will have one to acknowledge, Peter Zawicki, Dr. Angelina Serber, Dr. Deb Laverne, Dr. Bonnie Gray, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name, Mr. Robert Mugford, Ms. Sandra Desjardins, Ciri O'Leagro, Susan Christine Moore, and Susan Peterson. Moving on then, from those awards, we will have opportunity to approve the acceptance of transfer of new grant awards to the Maricopa County Community College Foundation from the Virginia G. Piper Charitable Trust to support the Licensed Practical Nurse Expansion Program at Glendale Community College, Mesa Community College, and Gateway Community College in the amount of $2,250,000 for the period from February 13, 2023, so it's going backwards a little bit, through April 30th, 2026. Board members, is there any comments or questions on this? And just again, for, first of all, it's a whopping amount of money, so congratulations. And the second piece, a reminder that even though this is listed as post-approval, it's because of the timing of cycles of all these grants, so just wanted to call that out. Next item on the consent agenda, item 12, approval of acceptance of a new grant in the amount of $500,000 from the State of Arizona Department of Emergency Military Affairs for an anti-human trafficking program from July 1, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. Any comments or questions? Item 13, approval of project initiation for a partial renovation to the Social Behavior East Building in the amount of $800,000 for a new nursing assistant lab at Scottsdale Community College. Any comments or questions? Item 14, approval to issue a purchase order to EMCOR Services Arizona in the amount of $850,000 to replace the air handling system in the music building at Phoenix College. Any comments or questions? Item 15, approval of expenditure budgeted funds not to exceed $25 million, did I read that right, over three years, $8,500,000 per year for the extension of Oracle Cloud Hosting and Managed Services Agreement for Enterprise Resource Planning Cloud Service Hosting Support for the time period of May 31st, 2023 to May 30th, 2026. Any comments or questions on that one? I do have a question. Was this a competitive process again, Dr. Gonzalez?
President Sullivan, let me ask Mr. Reeves if he's available to respond to your question.
Thank you.
Matt, are you there?
President Sullivan, thanks for your question. This is Matt Reeves. This is a renewal of the current Oracle contract that was competitively bid years ago. It's just a renewal of the existing contract.
Okay, thank you. When was that, years ago? Can someone tell me?
Mrs. Sullivan, we are using the State of Arizona contract, just to be clear about that.
Okay. And when was it originally, our, paid or put out there? Do you remember? Anyone remember? You can get back to me with that information, not it. Just curious. All right, so please do, and, and thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Sullivan, I will get that information and I'll respond back to the board about that date.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to item 16, approval of contract between Maricopa Community Colleges and Ed Financial Services LLC through February 28, 2026, with four additional one-year contract periods for an annual amount not to exceed $250,000 to support federal student loans, successful repayment, financial aid, default aversion services. Any comments or questions on item 16? Item 17, approval of revised fiscal year '21, '22 annual financial report for Gateway Early Item 17, approval of revised fiscal year 2122 annual financial report for Gateway Early College High School. Any comments or questions? Item 18, approval of budgeted expenditure amendment for fiscal year 2122. Any comments or questions? Is that year correct? Ms. Grunio?
Yes, it is, President Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on that item? Item 19, approval of amendment to intergovernmental agreement between City of Phoenix Human Services Department and Maricopa Community College District to accelerate the utilization of American Rescue Plan Act. Any comments or questions? Item 20, approval of curriculum. In courses, we have a deletion of 63, modifications of nine, and new, four new. In occupational programs, we have seven modifications, six deletions. In academic programs, we have one modification and one deletion. Do you have any comments or questions from the board?
President Sullivan?
Yes, please go ahead.
I'm looking at page 288 of the board book, or it would be page 6 of the curriculum item. And I find there are listed 13 courses in health unit coordinating assigned to the district office. And the district office, of course, is not an accredited institution. Why do we have courses at the district office?
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
That's a great question. President Sullivan and Dr. Thor, let me defer to Ms. Ellis, our acting provost, to respond to that.
Dr. Thor, thank you for the question. I'm scrolling to the item, so if you'd just give me one second to get there. I believe the reason that the district office is listed is because this is part of some programmatic, I believe it's HUC. I'm sorry, let me look. Yes. So the HUC curriculum, I believe, is a deletion as part of our ongoing course deletion process and work that was done in coordination with the college that offers this, which is Gateway Community College. And so as part of our annual review of curriculum, there's a comprehensive review of curriculum that's either no longer offered or curriculum that's going to be sunsetted, and it's just processed in that way. But this curriculum is actually owned by Gateway, and I believe was sunsetted on their behalf.
So it seems to me that it ought to be listed as Gateway, so as not to imply that the district office has the ability to offer courses.
Absolutely. We can make that correction, and I'll make a note of that for the teams as well. Thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on item 20? Moving on to item 21, approval of distance learning and real, yes, did I hear something? Okay, never mind. Approval of distance learning and real salado national tuition rates for fiscal year 2324. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, being none, on the 25th, we'll move into non-consent action items. The first item for approval or action would be the second read and approval of the proposed fiscal year 2324 residential faculty agreement effective July 1, 2023. Are there any comments or questions on this item? I believe, Dr. Newton, you're available to answer any questions, should there be some?
Yes, President Sullivan, I'm here.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on this item?
President Sullivan, it's Donna Davis.
Yes, Ms. Davis.
Dr. Newton, could you describe to me the process that this went through and who saw this?
Certainly. Do you want the process starting from the original development of the document?
Maybe not. I would just like to know how this was approved by the faculty.
Certainly. So the Faculty Executive Council is composed of 24 representatives from the 10 colleges in the district, plus six officers. And what happened was, we had, those 24 members, I'm sorry, I should tell you, are proportionally representing their colleges. So for example, Mesa, having more faculty, has more representatives on the Faculty Executive Council. We held a special meeting on April 6 at 3 o'clock, and we called a roll call vote for every member to cast their vote supporting or not supporting the proposed faculty policies. I should note that at the standard FEC meeting, a week and a half prior to that, we had shared the second draft. We went through the first draft at a prior FEC meeting. And FEC members then went back to their colleges, shared their the conversation that happened at FEC, and got their colleagues' input, brought that back to FEC. We went through the second draft, and again, our FEC representatives went back to their colleges and their colleagues. Some of those colleges held actual votes on their campuses of their faculty senates. And then they came to that April 6 meeting and voted based on behalf of their colleges. So the 24 members by roll call vote all voted affirming support of the proposed policy. There were no abstentions and no votes of nay.
Thank you, Dr. Newton. It sounds like there was a lot of participation in the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newton. Board members, do you have any other comments or questions on this item? Thank you. Being none, then the second item on the non-consent action items would be approval of two additional MOUs for the 2223 faculty agreement, one on workload limits and summer supervision in summer '23, and two, course load calculations. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on that item? Dr. Newton, can you just briefly get us another update on how all of this came about, too?
Absolutely. That MOU about workload limits and summer supervision is designed to support colleges as they move forward. We've got the new RFA will go into effect if it is approved by the board on July 1, which is smack dab in the middle of the summer. And so in order to support the college's ability to plan for the summer and do the work that they need to do, we are asking for, we have asked for an MOU that would allow them to use the current faculty agreement for summer supervision and workload limits. And then course load calculations, there was a, there are multiple course load calculations that were being used because there is not alignment in the course load calculations in our CCTA and our faculty agreement and the temporary guidelines, and therefore colleges, through no fault of their own, had been using one of those three. And we did not want to hold them out of compliance with the faculty agreement when they had been operating in good faith with those three, so that is being addressed in the current RFA. But in order to ensure that colleges were allowed to move forward effectively, we wanted to make sure that we provided this MOU.
Thank you very much for that explanation, and certainly, again, I think that helps clarify process questions for us. Thank you for your time. So after the non-action item portion of our meeting, we would move to first read and information. The first item would be employment and separation for the February 18, '23 through March 17, '23 period. Are there any comments or questions on that report? After that, we would move to the first read of our proposed fiscal year '24 budget for Maricopa County Community College District. Are there any comments or questions on that? And Ms. Grunio, I'm sure you'll be all prepared to take our questions and comments at the board meeting, if there are any. Thank you. Item three would then be the first read of governing board policy changes to 1.0 outcomes, 1.0 global ends, broadest outcome, 1.1 university transfer education in general education, 1.2 workforce and economic development, 1.3 developmental education, 1.4 community development and civic and global engagement, and 4.1 governing values. Are there any comments and questions, or questions, and Dr. Thor, would you like to offer any comment or question first?
Thank you, President Sullivan. These changes are pretty straightforward. They replace the existing 1.0 policies that relate to outcomes with the new strategies put forth in our strategic plan. Structure-wise, the biggest change is that currently the mission, vision, mission, vision, and values are contained in Board Policy 4.1. This change would pull the vision, mission, and values up to section one of the policies to align it with the other parts of the strategic plan. So basically, there's no change in the wording from what the board has already adopted as the strategic plan.
Thank you for that. Board members, do you have any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, being none, we'll then move to the monitoring port. And as noted, there's a placeholder for a budget analysis report, Fund One, general unrestricted fund for the nine months ending March 31, 2023. Any comments or questions on what that could be or would be? From there, we'll move to the community linkage, governing board reports for current event summaries from board members. And then there's a series of items noted for other meetings, as you can read in your agenda. There is one thing I would like to remind us about, and that is our Thursday morning, excuse me, Thursday evening opportunity to attend the reception for Chancellor Gonzalez, being held Thursday, this Thursday, at 5:30 PM at the Helios Foundation. It's being cosponsored with our foundation, as well as sponsored by Helios. And there are a number of industry and educational partners and leaders who will be present to acknowledge and receive Dr. Gonzalez as the chancellor of our Community College District. So board members, if it's already, if it's not already on your calendar, please mark it. I think it'll be an important event. We're glad to always see Dr. Gonzalez recognized. And I know we also want to applaud the leadership of Helios to education generally and specifically to the community colleges. Mr. Speaker, I know you are a cosponsor. Do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, President Sullivan, governing board members, chancellor, and guests. We're excited about this opportunity to recognize the great leadership our chancellor has and are ever so grateful to Helios, who is really pulling out the stops. We'll also have a calypso band from Phoenix College there to entertain our leaders and guests. And so looking forward to seeing everyone, and a special shout out to Darcy Renfro, who worked on this reception process with the foundation.
Thank you. So board members, I look forward to seeing you there. And Dr. Gonzalez, I look forward to seeing you dance the calypso.
I'll bring my dancing shoes, President Sullivan.
Okay, I'll hold you to that. It's exciting. We'll look forward to seeing you there. Board members, I just wanted to also remind you, we have a lot of other activities and events coming up. There's the all trustee meeting next week, being held with other trustees throughout the state. Will be visited by the CEO of the ACCT National. And I think it'll be a good learning and opportunity for us to interact with our other fellow trustees of the state. Then there are convocations. There's another Artist of Promise event. Then we move into graduations and all of that before we get to our May 9 Agenda Review, which will be virtual. In anticipation, there may be some work sessions having to be called, but I will attach them to board meetings or other things noted on our calendar. But this is the busy, busy, busy time of year for all of us. And I know it sometimes is difficult on our calendars, but I think this is our opportunity to really see the results of all the hard work and that goes on in this district, as we see our students proudly walk across stages or raise their hand, throw their hats in the air, or just be recognized generally for their accomplishment. So I'm going to now move to adjournment of the governing board meeting. So except for board members and some of our content experts, everyone else will be excused. Hold on, board members, I'm going to come back to you here in a second. But I'm going to note that we're adjourning our Agenda Review at 5:56 PM this evening. Board members, and those of you who have been noted as special content experts, I'm going to give us a 10-minute break. I know that may seem a lot, but let's reconvene at 6:10. Just put your WebEx on mute, and when we reconvene, we'll reconvene with video. And that opportunity will be present on your screen. But for now, everyone else, good night, and those of you who've been asked to attend our e-session with us, you know who you are, and I'll look forward to seeing you at 6:10.